Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. This is the September 11th Planning Commission Public Hearing. Oh, there's David. I'll talk slowly for you. September 11th Planning Commission Public Hearing. If we could start with roll call, please.
Lee Cruz.
Adrian Summers.
Rich Levy.
Bryan Adams.
Lou Jador.
David Box.
Don't see anybody online joining us as a planning commissioner. Before we begin agenda items, is there anybody who'd like to give us public comment on something not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening. Walter McGill, four-point surveying, 1769 Brom Drive. Tonight's something that you've heard it before probably from me or others. But I want to go over and I'm going to write a letter to engineering, but I'll just give you a heads up on it and city council. But it's about sidewalks and you're aware of complete street projects. You've seen us do a lot of sidewalks go in on 13th Street as we've done projects on the right-hand side of the road, the B and K side, the railroad track side, we'll call that. And I think what's happening for your understanding is if I have a project and if it's in Copper Ridge and I have to build sidewalks, I'm going to go out and get two bids. So I'm going to call two of the flat work guys in town to come out and do a bid. And then I'm going to pick maybe the low bidder or whoever can do it the soonest. Now, if I want to do a fee in lieu of, I have to use a public works spreadsheet. And this public works spreadsheet comes out with a net that's going to be 35% higher than what I have my two bids for. So we need to try to get public works to move over to accept the two bids or have some appreciation for 90% less than what the bids cost. So we could get some fee in lieu of money so we can complete sidewalks where they might be more appropriate. So just something to keep your eyes on. The other one, I know we've done some code improvements lately. We haven't really addressed landscaping. And as more and more we look at, well, we're going to do street trees. Those street trees need irrigation. They need irrigation taps. Street trees are neat. Do we get the street trees that we visualize? Not really. We get flowering crab apples that grow to nine feet. You can look downtown at the most successful ones over the years, but you can revisit sunlight on street trees if you want to take a look at that too. But that came up. For your information, the High Point Drive project that was going to happen this year kind of got tied up with permits and then the contractor and the owner have come to a disagreement. So looks for the lap project will be happening next year and that brought my eyes up to street trees again. So a couple of things that were on my mind of recent projects. So thanks for listening.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll go to agenda item number one. This is PL 2025-0166, the fold at Steamboat Suites. Is the applicant here for a presentation?
Thank you. Walter McGill again, 1769 Brom, four-point surveying and engineering. And I'm here on behalf of Legacy Resorts, who's looking for a conditional use change on the Pine Grove condominiums to become a full-service hotel. Toby, could you put up the existing conditions plan, please? This project is, we've been on Pine Grove Road since the early eighties. And two condominium buildings make up the units. And then they have an open parking lot there in the front. So their lot originally was slightly bigger. Toby and I might have been in here earlier, just middle before. Public Works rightfully showed me the deed that gave an easement, gave Pine Grove Road as a right-of-way to the city of Steamboat Springs. So that made some changes to our plan. The parking, so we're really talking a change in use here. And so change in use for a full-service hotel. Toby will take you through the uses a little bit. So the owners want to do this because it's just been a full change from the condominiums. They own a lot of the units and they would like to get some more long-term or even shorter term over time. So there's two connection points that they'll improve. And that would be to get sidewalks from internal sidewalks back out to Pine Grove Road. You're going to add a bike rack and they're going to improve. It had damage. Somebody drove into their trash enclosure if anybody went by the project before tonight. And that had damaged the trash enclosure, but they're going to get the dumpsters back into the existing trash enclosure. Paint some striping to get people across the parking lot in a safer way for pedestrians and upgrade the handicap parking and make sure that's all striped out. Overall, traffic, few more trips get generated from hotels and condominiums and ownership. There is the bus service there, so a lot of the guests of the hotel will likely come in cars from the Empi Valley Airport, but they might come in a taxi and then just use the transit system that's available to them in front of the hotel on Pine Grove Road. If there's any additional questions, it's really a change in use. The unit numbers stay the same. And you can seek my questions for myself. The owners are online too. If you'd like to ask the owners any questions on use, registration. And we'll leave it at that for tonight.
Great. Thank you for your presentation. Toby, do you have a staff presentation as well?
Sure. Toby Stoffer, Senior Planner. So this property was developed in about the 1970s as a multiple-family residential use. It's been used and managed as a timeshare property for most of that time. Based on how the timeshares were created, over time, the manager of the property acquired more control of those shares in those units due to owners defaulting on their timeshare maintenance fees. So the current owners brought this situation to the city's attention, indicating that there's, since there's a single entity in control of the majority of these units, the operation is mostly similar to a hotel use. And they wanted to get the correct approvals in place for that hotel use. So as was mentioned, this request is to convert the Pine Grove condominiums from multiple-family residential to a hotel use. It better aligns with how the property operates. The hotel will have nightly stays for transient guests. They'll have housekeeping, a full-time resort manager, front desk, staff support at the hotel for 24/7 and some security and onsite maintenance. There are 30 units in each building, two buildings, 60 units total and 64 existing parking spaces. The project is not proposing to change the number of units or the number of parking spaces. There are a few features on the site such as the building and parking lot setbacks, the ground floor ceiling height, snow storage and landscaping that are existing and they're non-conforming. So those aspects are not proposed to change or expand the non-conformity with this conditional use approval. As was mentioned, the project will build some sidewalks from their property to the new sidewalk along Pine Grove Road. The hotel is a conditional use in the community commercial zone district. A hotel could have impacts related to parking, maybe guests arriving at variable hours or a different level of intensity that's different from the adjacent uses. We find that a hotel in this area should be consistent with other hotel, commercial and multiple-family residential uses that are nearby. The future land use classification for the area is mixed-use corridor, which calls for a mix of residential and commercial uses. The use is consistent with community plan goals, including integrating a mix of compatible uses, supporting mixed-use areas that serve year-round visitors and residents and implementing land use patterns that support an efficient transportation system. This property is on the red line, which goes between downtown and the mountain. There is a new bus stop nearby. The use is also consistent with the purpose of the CC district, which is intended to provide mixed-use areas with pedestrian-friendly design, which this use should. We don't think the hotel will have any impacts on the adjacent uses that are different from what has been there previously. As was mentioned, the site has developed and managed its impacts for many years. So the changes to the use or the addition of the sidewalks and crosswalks shouldn't cause any new impacts that are different. We do recommend approval with the conditions in the staff report. However, I did provide the new site plan and existing conditions earlier today. So that resolves one of those conditions that was in there. That was, that new site plan and existing traditions was based on the active construction that's happening on Pine Grove Road. So that's why it came in a little later than usual. I have talked to a couple neighbors about the project. I haven't talked to anyone who's in opposition. Most have just been curious about it and had questions.
Great. Thank you, Toby. Any questions from commissioners?
We have one quick question. Walter mentioned the changes that were made and Toby referenced them as well as a result of Pine Grove construction. We received new drawings today. Are there any changes to the standards overview chart as a result of the changes?
I think the snow storage might have increased a little bit because the property lost some acreage. So the snow storage remains mostly the same. Some of the snow storage area was removed, but I think overall their percentage went up so that the new site plan lists some accurate numbers.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Toby, is it, what's STR overlay zone is this in?
I think this is in the prohibited STR overlay zone.
No, I think it's in the green zone, but we'll verify.
Yeah, that, that I'd be very curious.
Pull up the map right now.
We'll give you a second to do that. Any other questions in the meantime? I have a quick one for Walter, just to buy Toby some time. So understanding ownership and it's probably a very easy question, but with it being a multi-family type development, is there an HOA where there had to be like consensus in order to be able to change the use of the individual units? Or were they just all 100% owned by one person? Or how do you, how do you make a use change to what is really a lot of individually owned?
You know, as Toby said, Alex is online too. He's from the ownership group. But they ended up buying the units because people weren't paying maintenance over time. So then I think they had control of the HOA enough, control of all the units. And I'm not sure if they own every unit in there currently, but they were allowed to make that change in use by having the majority ownership.
Right. Therefore, the HOA's direction became that just because they had a majority.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Alex, did you have anything that you could get turned on and answer that question from Bryan?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name's Alex Smith, President of Anco Hospitality. Happy to be on this meeting. You answered it correctly, Walter. We, with the condominium docs and the declarations and all the rights that we have, we have controlling interests of the property here. And, you know, we've been running and operating as a hotel for years in this area. So really this is to get it in compliance with our operation.
Great. That makes a lot of sense. My quick follow-up to that then though is if you don't, I mean, even if there's one property that you don't own and then it changes to hotel, how does that, how does that functionally work with units that are individually owned that are being operated by the same company? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's, this property would be a floating plan on it. So it would really just be not specific units that they would own currently in there. So with us having majority and controlling interest there, that's the best decision for this property.
So they would continue to operate as just individual condominiums. They wouldn't be in there. Sometimes at the grand, people live in their units and they just live in the hotel there full-time. So it'd be the same kind of situation.
So multiple uses are happening simultaneously and that's.
If I can just ask the applicant to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that all of these units are timeshare units. So there's no, please correct me if I'm mistaken, but I did not, I do not believe that there's any units that are individually owned. So there are some shares that are still owned by individual timeshare owners, but there are no units that are just owned by one single person.
Right.
So the entire property operates as a timeshare hotel use.
Right, right.
And then there may be some.
Full-time resident can't really even exist anyway, is another.
And please, again, can you, if the applicant can confirm that my statements are correct.
Your statements are absolutely correct and there's a high delinquency on the timeshare side here. So us defaulting to a rental operations is a way to subsidize the current operation that's in place there.
That helps a bunch. Thank you. Do you guys have a follow-up to Lou's?
Yeah, I think I misspoke. This is in the green zone for the STR overlay zone district. So I apologize. I think I was thinking of something else I was doing in another part of today.
So just, and then these are rentals, short-term rentals possibly. I assume during the winter, probably quite a bit. Because it's in the green zone or I assume there are tax ramifications associated with being a hotel versus being a short-term rental?
Yes, there would be tax ramifications. Yes.
Help me understand your question. You mean?
There's like a 9%, you know, short-term rental tax and there's like a 29% hotel tax.
Right, but the, but the STR tax would be replaced by the hotel tax. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Or online, if there is, you could raise your, raise your hand. Okay, C9, Walter, did you have any final follow-up or anything? Thank you. Or Toby?
No.
I'll close our public portion of this agenda item and come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
I'm, I, I don't see anything contrary to the current use. I guess they're making some improvements. I noticed there's a sidewalk that wasn't there. Now there is or not a sidewalk, a set of stairs that's being put in. So I have absolutely no, no problem with changing the use on this property.
Anybody else?
I concur. I would say mainly that I don't see that much of an operation difference between a hotel and the timeshare. Yes, there might be more, a little more turnover, but this is a location that certainly can handle more traffic.
Agreed.
And maybe some others. I really see no problem at all. It seems like a minor change to me as far as the use.
Great.
I concur and they've made changes to the property to improve it as well, which is nice.
Yeah, it'll be, excuse me, it'll be nice to see some improvements to that parking lot. A little neglected over the years, so.
Perfect.
I don't have anything new to add. I just think it meets the criteria and seems pretty straightforward.
Perfect. Not only a similar use, but just to add to your guys' point is that also the other hotel uses along Pine Grove that have kind of proven that this is an area that kind of readily accepts this kind of use and is complimentary to those other ones, just to add to your points.
And it's got good mass transit next to it, so.
Right, right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Chair, I have a question on the motion of staff, just to make sure we make the motion right. Toby, is it, is it condition one that we do not need to include or what do you recommend?
You can just include both conditions. It doesn't matter that one is resolved. So you can include it as is.
Thank you. You want to make a motion?
Sure.
Great.
Motion to approve PL 2025-0166, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion on the motion? Then I will call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And that passes unanimously. Thank you for your time. We'll jump into our second agenda item for this evening. This is PL 2024-0382, Roan. I'm saying it right, right? I think I got it right the first time as well. Okay. Is the applicant here for a presentation?
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order. This development, the Roan Phase One, the exclusive realtor is John Wade. I am a candidate for a council position. John Wade is a contributor to my campaign. He and I have not talked about this development in any fashion or form, but I wanted to disclose that to see if anybody on the council had any issue with that and to make that public. But this is an item he and I have not talked about. We've asked the city attorney and on this item. And at this point, it's a disclosure item. Jen? Sorry.
Yeah, you can come on down and I'm sure I'd ask you this question if he, if David didn't.
Yeah.
Surprisingly, that hasn't come up before, but the city's code of ethics prohibits gifts, but we do permit certain gifts, including explicitly campaign contributions should not be considered gifts if they are provided as authorized by law, which this one should be properly reported. There is, there is a little bit, the language in the code is a little confusing, so I'm just going to walk you through it. Campaign contributions are not going to be considered to improperly influence a city official. They are not to be considered, you don't consider the purpose of rewarding the city official, but they can't, you can consider a rebuttable presumption that a gift from a person who has submitted a pending application or who the city official knows is considering submitting such an application. It doesn't sound like Mr. Wade was the applicant. So I don't think that, I think you have rebutted that presumption. And I think that you're fine with your disclosure. And let, but I think the commission can, can have a discussion, but that's what our code states.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. We can all kind of weigh in on it.
I have no problem, especially with Jen letting us know about disclosures, so.
I guess the other question just to ask you is, I mean, a real legal issue or just a perceived conflict, is there, are you concerned about it? Would you rather recuse yourself and simplify your life or do you think it's pretty cut and dry?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'm not concerned at all, but I want to disclose it as a potential perceived conflict and allow the conversation to occur and accept the decision of the commission.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
I guess I just hadn't heard you say the statement that, well, it may be legal and you guys haven't talked about it. A statement that says, in no way does that affect your judgment on this item.
Would you like me to say that?
Yes.
In no way does this affect my judgment on the item, and we have not talked about this item, but I brought it up as a potential item someone could bring up.
Thank you.
Any concerns, or we'll just be good. That sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience on all that. We got it all resolved. When you're ready for your applicant presentation.
Good evening. Glad to be here. Vince Cancelosi, Managing Director from RAL Companies. We're the developer for the Roan project. As you're probably aware, we've already permitted for the first phase, which is parcel two, and we are well into construction there. We've been working with Jeremy and the planning team as well as engineering to get, we've got that approved and then subsequently got the permits and are in process of building. That was a very great experience working with the planning commission here. We currently have applied to planning for the next phase, phase three, which is very similar, additional townhomes in a very similar style on parcel three. We have, as you also are probably aware, this was originally part of a PUD, which is no longer applicable. So we are conforming to all current zoning regulations, and we've gone through three or four rounds of planning submissions to make sure everything was in conformance and everyone was happy with where we were with the design and the proposal. So with that, we're here tonight hoping to be able to get parcel three approved. So when we're done with parcel two, we can keep going. And with that, I'll introduce Peter Patton, and let you know that also if there are any questions, Jeanette Hoffman, the design architect, is on the line, as well as Joe Wiedemeyer, our civil engineer, and Peter Patton as well, will present the application to you folks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Patton with Patton Associates. Just run through a few quick slides. So this is our team. We've got local consultants as well as consultants that are really top-notch from SB architects and surroundings landscape. I think they've done a tremendous job with parcel two and now parcel three. Okay, Toby? So this is where it all started, 20 years ago almost. See if I can do the pointer. This is the parcel. Well, originally, it was two parcels, parcels four and five. Do you want me to do this over here? Is it easier?
It's easier for us, if you don't mind.
So this is the property, the site that we are here this evening. For, it's called Roan. We changed the name. As you recall, we were here, this was called Steamboat Meadows Parcel Two. This is now called Roan, or parcel three is, we use the term internally. So it's existing Bangtail, and then the current road ends here, and so we're proposing the extension of Broomtail to a cul-de-sac here. This will conclude, with the exception of this, which we call parcel one, and RAL and Steamboat Meadows LLC own. That will be, that's the only vacant parcel now when parcel three Roan is complete for Wild Horse Meadows.
Oh, do you want me to turn? Let me know.
So a couple of quick site photos. The upper right one is looking south from where I just mentioned the end of the road is. So where the arrow sign is, that's going to be the extension of Broomtail into the property. It's obviously, as you guys have driven past it 100,000 times, it's very sloped property. There's a sidewalk in on Bangtail, which is the lower road there on the right, on the lower left. The, that's from the far other end, looking north from actually from Eagle Glen Drive, which is the townhomes that are on the very south end of this parcel. And then, and again, on the left there, that's the existing Bangtail. So you can see, it's a very steep slope site, and, you know, I think we're, we're working quite well with that slope to make a really high-quality project, okay? Existing conditions on the aerial there shows the property. Again, that's the end of the road right there. We're going to, this has been graded in since 2007, okay? When construction first started on the site. So we're building this road to this cul-de-sac. Mount Werner Road, obviously here, existing Bangtail. This is a brand-new trail that the developer just built. This existing conditions I put up just so you could see, the topo is very steep from Mount Werner Road down through the middle and then steep again down to Bangtail. The utilities are obviously all in on Bangtail, but we will be installing the new utilities on the extension of Broomtail. Okay, Toby? Here is the site plan, 51 townhomes. Some of these will access off of Bangtail, so lower garage level access. And then these will, of course, all access off of the new extension on Broomtail. There are three, four, and five-bedroom units, five different building types, so there's a variety. It's not all going to look the same. Each, each unit will have an enclosed one-car garage and then a space in front, so really adequate parking. And then there's a really nice, high-quality amenity building right here at the entrance. So that's like pool, hot tub, outdoor area, concierge, fireplace, really nice, okay? So here's an example of some of the architecture. You've seen this before with the parcel two, so it's very similar. Built into the hillside, we're meeting all the base area standards. It's going to be a sustainable project, meeting the Green Globe's building initiative, all those criteria. You can see how we're building into some of those steep hillsides, working with the slopes. It's really going to be complimentary to all of Wild Horse Meadows in terms of, you get that feel when you just look at it. It looks like Wild Horse Meadows and very, very nice and high-quality with materials and scale, okay? So this is the trail. I call it the zigzag trail. And it's partially concrete, partially soft surface. But the applicant built this at great expense, and it just was completed, and I understand a lot of people are using it. This is the only trail connection really to get up to Mount Werner Road from Wild Horse Meadows. So it's going to get a high use, and we just feel that it's a great public amenity, okay? So as Vince mentioned, we've got a hybrid zone. There are vested rights from the PUD that were vested in 2018. And then the hybrid comes in where we fill in with RR1 criteria, dimensional standards, where the PUD vested rights had blank, blank cells, blank squares, there was a matrix. So I'll tell you, it wasn't easy, but we meet all of those criteria. And it's, it's been a challenge to work with the old criteria that was vested and then with the new RR1 stuff. And Jeremy was excellent, Jeremy Brown was excellent, working through all of those challenges. And so there are no variances whatsoever requested as far as the CDC goes, okay? So we meet those criteria, and this is the last slide. We're requesting approval for our DP tonight. We agree with all the conditions of approval in the staff memorandum, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Toby, do you have a presentation for staff as well?
Yeah, sure. Toby Soffer for Jeremy Brown. So we will need to rely on the applicant to answer any questions, because I don't know too much. But this is, as was mentioned, a 15-building, multiple-family residential development that'll include 51 units and a shared amenity building. Property is between Mount Werner Road and Bangtail Road on the eastern edge of the Wild Horse subdivision. It's zoned RR1, but as was mentioned, there is, it is subject to some vested PUD conditions. The vested aspects of the PUD include setback height, commercial density, and uses. There's no commercial density, but there is a commercial property that's still left in the PUD. The development also is exempt from the public amenity outlined in the CDC. The Wild Horse Gondola subdivision, or the Wild Horse Gondola is the public amenity that was provided for this entire subdivision, so they don't have to provide that public amenity. The buildings are mostly triplex and fourplex buildings, three to five stories high, and then the amenity building that's shared by all units. This project is here tonight because of the total square footage. As was mentioned, the project has no variances and meets all of the RR1 and vested PUD standard modifications. The buildings are similar with other development in the vicinity in terms of scale and density. The project will add some development to the base area where density and infill are encouraged by several of our plans. The development should have no adverse impacts as it meets all of our environmental standards in the CDC. It also has adequate access and pedestrian connections, as well as connections for vehicles and other services. And we found that it is in compliance with all CDC requirements and those modifications from the PUD, and we recommend approval with the conditions as listed.
All right, great. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions from commissioners?
Go with a quick one for staff. Do we have a requirement for facade variations on a development of this size?
I think when you have triplex and fourplex buildings, those are multiple-family buildings, so we do have some design standards, but I'd have to check on what the base area calls for. That's typical in multiple-family design standards, but we might also have that in the base area standards.
Excellent. Another question, so, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the applicant. Tell me if I read your submission correctly, is there's one parking spot and a garage, one for some size of vehicle in the driveway, and then two for guests for the entire development or the entire phase? That may meet code, but that makes no sense to me. I live in a development of 44 units. We have 10 parking spots, and we don't have enough when visitors come. That's going to be a big problem. I understand it may meet requirements, but...
Is there a question?
So is a question, is there any opportunity to expand the number of visitor parking spots?
Gotcha.
You know, I think maybe Joe, who's on, who's our civil engineer and is on the call, might be best to answer that question.
Hello?
Hey, Joe.
Can y'all hear me?
Hey, Joe.
Yep. Great. Joe Wiedemeyer? Right, I got to state my name and address. 1177 Longview. So parking, yeah. Well, there's no designated parking spots other than what's at the pool. I think there's plenty of shoulder room around the amenity building on the, I guess, left-hand side coming in that you could park. Winter parking might be tough. There is potentially an opportunity to allow parking around the cul-de-sac as well, but it's pretty limited for the most part.
Would, but parking around the cul-de-sac could hinder a fire truck going around that cul-de-sac, I would imagine? Is that a correct statement?
Well, not if you, I mean, the shoulder's fairly wide off the edge, so I think it's, I don't remember exactly how much, how wide it is, but, I mean, yeah, I just guess it potentially could, but I think there's plenty of room that a fire truck could get around it.
That'd be a question for fire. Thank you. Would you like staff to follow up on just kind of parking standards and expectations? Or do you already have your information you want?
Toby, is that something you, I didn't ask you to research this for me.
I can provide a little bit of information that Jeremy told me and the applicant could confirm it. Each built, each unit, I believe, has one interior garage space, and then each driveway is long enough to have an additional parking space. The RR1 standards, I believe, require one space for each of these units. So again, that may be a policy question that we may not like, but that is our standard. So it does meet the standard in that regard, but they are also providing extra parking that would primarily be for the units and not necessarily for visitors. But our hope with those parking standards in the base area is that people may take shuttles, may be able to take the public bus from this area, may be able to walk, so hopefully there would be less cars. You never know how it is in real life, but that's what we hope. And I also wanted to just add real quick, I was able to quickly research Rich's question. So each individual building needs to meet some design standards, but we don't have the standard that requires the same standard that we have in the multiple-family building design standards, that there is a variety of building types within a multiple-family development, so that is a little different from the base area to other multiple-family developments.
Great, thank you.
I will also just note, I understand that there are five building types, each of those with some variation, but...
So in all likelihood, it probably could have met that standard anyway.
I'm not saying that.
Saying you guys reviewed that, but...
I'm not saying that, because I do think they look very similar, so I don't, we'd have to do, we would have had to do a detailed analysis to see if the different building types were to meet it, and there's different ways of meeting it. So we have not done that analysis, because as Toby said, it's not an applicable standard in this case. But I just wanted to note that they are not, not every building is identical.
Any other questions? I have a quick question for the applicant. It might be for Joe. You pass on to whoever you want to pass it on to. On the zigzag trail, and the building that's closest to it, I think if I'm zooming in, Building P is what it is. It seems that it is pushing really close up against that highest switchback, like topography-wise, with one retaining wall, two retaining walls, a lot of steps, kind of hard to tell exactly how much grade is happening. My only worry, obviously, is that that major switchback on the trail would have a huge falloff at the end of the switchback without railing, guards, protection, things like that. Have you guys taken any?
Yeah, I know we've incorporated some railings into the, into the path, but I will let Joe answer that question.
That'd be great, thank you, yeah.
Um, I guess, Brian, I'll just say that this is, I guess, still preliminary, and those details haven't really been worked out yet, but I can guarantee you, we can make a safe, you know, transition to grade there. There is a large staircase, but I mean, there will be handrails on it. So yeah, I mean, we can, well, once we get to construction drawings detailed, yeah, we'll definitely look at that a lot closer.
Perfect. I'm guessing we won't ever again, but I know you guys will. Toby, are there standards that kind of require there to be guardrails, especially if they're near to a major retaining wall step?
Yeah, so we do get that question about guardrails a lot, so guardrails usually come out of the building code for a safety hazard, but they're not necessarily always required. They can be placed when, when requested or when needed. They're not always standard, but we can, like Joe said, I'm sure we could make it, make sure that it's safe, and if we need to put extra guardrails in, even if it doesn't meet the building code, we can, you know, try and make that happen at building permit or something.
But I can ask my worries, because building code... That's my worries because building code isn't going to touch this. Right? And so how do we kind of ensure that, you know, just being a public sidewalk and the retaining walls? It's not like it's just even a steep slope. It's retaining walls.
Yeah, so if I can just add to that. So I'm, I'm also an architect and I'm involved in every step of the design of all of our projects. And we provide protection of either a guardrail or a planted area or something for anything above an 18 inch drop. And I'm sure that's incorporated throughout the site.
Okay.
I think that would address your concern.
That does, thank you.
I've, I've got a question about the same staircase. Is it a staircase down to the trail or is it a staircase up?
In my head, I'm assuming it's down, but without the drawings, like I can't verify.
It's, it's down. Yeah, it's down.
Because I guess what I would worry about is someone coming downhill on a bike and then slipping and going down the stairs. But if it's an uphill staircase, that pretty much alleviates my concern.
But at the next turn, it's a retaining wall that's trying to catch up to grade on the downhill side, right? So it's the stairs like a small component. And of course you've got an uphill side to it, but then you've also got that downhill side that's falling off pretty quick. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. No, I do, yeah. Well, that, that trail actually isn't meant for bikes. That, that is not, that, and we specifically have signs at the entrances of that trail that say no bikes. So because that is just basically with the topography, it's impossible to build, realistically build a trail that meets the standards to ride a bike on. This, this does not. This is a pedestrian path. So.
I think we all know what no bike signs mean in this town.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well. I mean, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is there's plenty of places like this around town where there's staircases, trails. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, but I mean, this is going to be designed to meet ADA, or not ADA, but I mean, all, any, all code. I mean, someone, are you worried about someone riding their bike down the stairs?
Oh, yeah, I was worried that the staircase was downhill from the end of the trail and someone coming around that corner too fast.
Oh, no, no.
And going down the stairs at first.
I think it's, I think the stairs are coming down and the trails coming down.
Yes. So it's, yeah, like, so you're, yeah, you're coming down from the second level of building P.
You can't fall off.
Thank you, AJ.
Right, yeah, yeah. That's what I, that's what I was worried about.
Okay, sorry.
That would be even more of a problem, absolutely.
Intentionally or unintentionally?
Yeah, either way.
That's great. Any other questions? Okay, seen none. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? Don't actually see any public, so we'll close that. Any final follow-up from the applicant that you'd like to give us? Great.
I want to say that Jeremy has been a pleasure to work with. He is just very helpful in navigating all the regulations. So I just want to give him credit for that and thank him for his work.
Great. Anything else from staff?
No.
Any final questions from commissioners? I'll close our public portion for this agenda item. Come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
I, the only concern I have is on, actually on the parking side. This, these are going to be potentially short-term rentals in some form, I assume. And, yeah, where they're located, which means they're going to have lots of cars. More cars than, you know, and they may meet the requirements that we set. And that's about all we can do. And maybe there needs to be some policy evaluation for situations like this. Because I don't see people parking on their cul-de-sac or on the road there in the winter.
I mean, I agree with you, but other than saying it out loud and hoping we get to design guideline work as policy soon, that we could take a look at that. I'm not quite sure. I think it appropriately applies to this.
No, and.
Do you guys both agree? Because I know you both brought it up and I don't disagree, but I also don't think it's a, it's a decision-making factor for this application. Am I, you guys aren't?
100% agree. I, I don't, I think it will be a problem that has to be, will, will become a problem potentially for the city. Hopefully not. Hopefully the neighborhood can address it. I know in my neighborhood, with all the short terminals we have, people bring four cars.
Yep.
It's a problem. I, but it meets our code.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Any other discussion or?
No, I mean, it has no variances. I can appreciate the discussion about the zigzag trail, but there is a zigzag trail there and that will be probably heavily used. I would, throughout the year, I would assume. So I'm, I'm in favor. I'm motion to approve BL 2024 0382 with 12 conditions, I think.
Yes.
Great. So we have a motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Great. Any other discussion though?
I would like to, Ryan's, Ryan's comments that there's no variations, there's no conditional use. We may have some concerns with the code that we bump against all the time. So I don't see really any other point of discussion or disagreement.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I'd like to, I guess, commend the applicant for meeting the applicable codes.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree as well. Yeah, just, it was only a small safety concern that I had that, you know, I always want to make sure we're mitigating zigzaggy trails, especially with a close proximity to a new building. Otherwise, 100% agree with you guys on their success in this design and, and meeting the code with a interesting looking product, as the first phase was. So very much agree. Unless there's any other discussion, I will call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously, unanimously as well. Thanks for your time. Let's see. Do we have a director's report this evening?
I do not.
Okay. Going to old business, we have three public hearing minutes. The first one is for July 10th. If only Commissioner O'Toole absent. I'd point out a quick change on this one that I happen to be aware of. The applicant last name is spelled wrong throughout on the first agenda item. Should be FOSS, F-O-S-S, not F-A-U-S-S. I think we could make that change. Any other changes or, or motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second with that change, all in favor?
With the change.
Great, thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Perfect. And then going to our second public hearing minutes, July 24th, with only Commissioner Augusta absent. Any changes or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. We're so fast at meeting minutes. Lastly, we have an August 14th public hearing meeting minutes with myself and Commissioner Levy absent. Are there any changes or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, second.
You want, you want to add something to the minutes?
No, I just said I was, I was honored to chair the meeting.
Oh, very good.
And you're absent.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great, that passes as well. That's it for us tonight. Should we do a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.